All right, we're live. Hello, everyone, and welcome to a new edition of Get Growing, Live Weekly Work Session with GetOiling. I'm Coach Ashley, and we are joined today by our founder and creator Greg Kilwin.
Hey, everybody. Welcome. We're glad you're here.
We are very happy to have you here today. This is a really exciting topic. I see you guys are pouring in. Go ahead and come over and say hello in the chat. Let us know where you're coming in from. Let us know if you're excited to learn how you can enroll four new members per week into your Young Living business, because that is our topic today. Excited to get to that. So as we are getting started here, just to do a little bit of housekeeping, I know a lot of you are new today. Maybe you've never been to one of our weekly work sessions before. This is something that we do for the GetOiling community and for the Young Living community at large, because there are so many of us who are trying to figure out ways to be more effective, to use what little time we have available, or to to take our efforts and multiply them so that we can really reap the benefits that are possible by helping people, by sharing Young Living products with them. So we want to figure out how to do more of that in less time and to be more effective when we do it. And Greg here has created an expansive, amazing set of tools that helps you to grow your Young Living business, online and off, with organization, with marketing, and just so, so many things. And so every week, we do this weekly work session to share with you the different ways that you can grow. And if you're new to us, we certainly invite you to come and join us. You can get started with GetOiling today with your own account for just $1 at GetOiling.com. But to be here, you do not have to be a member. It's totally free to you. And I definitely hope that you put what you learned today to use, whether you're a member with our community or not, so that you can get out there and experience more abundance by sharing Young Living with more people and enrolling more members this week. So over in our chat here, blowing up from all over the place. Good to see you, guys. Welcome, welcome. I'm Coach Ashley, by the way, based in Brooklyn, New York, where it's rainy today. And Greg, you're in North Dakota.
Fargo, North Dakota. Yeah, it's actually a pretty nice day, 75 and sunny. A little bit of a breeze, but pretty good.
It is warmer where you are than where I am. Fabulous. All right. So welcome, you guys. Yeah, I see it's rainy down in DC as well, right down the coast from me. All right. So without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and go over into our slides. I'm going to do some teaching today, and then we are going to open up for Q and A. And even if time allows, demonstration of different aspects of the system should you have questions, because what we teach today is absolutely in line with things that you can use our system for. So here we go.
I can see your screen looks great.
All right, fabulous. All right. So welcome. The title of our training this week is How to Get Four New Members, Four New Young Living Members Every Week Into Your Business. I want to ask you guys a question first before we move ahead. What is your goal rank right now? And I don't, and obviously, you know, everybody would love to be a Royal Crown Diamond, right? But let's just say in the next six months, what is the rank you're aiming for? What is the rank that you want to hit by the fall, by the end of the year? Seeing some answers.
The gold, gold, executive silver.
Fabulous, fabulous. All right. So let me ask you guys a question and definitely do chime in with an answer to this as well. If you could enroll four new members, if you personally could enroll four new members every single week, how quickly do you think you would be able to reach that goal? Would it be a six-month goal that becomes a two-month goal? What would that look like for you? And how would it feel to be able to move ahead that quickly? Right? Wouldn't that accelerate your business rapidly? So the fact is, guys, is it's possible to do this consistently. It's 100% possible to do this consistently. With the right mindset, we all know that that comes first, right? What was it? I think it was Jim Rohn that said, "Your wallet can't grow unless your mind does." I'm paraphrasing. Your mindset comes first, and then the right strategy comes next. And then some simple systems that you can put into place that can allow for this to happen on a consistent basis. Now, maybe some of you watching this right now have enrolled four new members in a week, but very, very few of us, and I would venture to guess a single-digit percentage, do this consistently, week over week, over week, over week, right? We feast and famine, we up and down, and some of us haven't actually experienced that boon of, 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 you know, one or more per week, right? Maybe per month, but not necessarily per week. So we're going to talk about how we can get that done today. Who is ready to learn how to do this? Quick show of hands. Let me see. Super exciting stuff. Awesome. All right, let's get to it. All right. So today, what we are going to learn is, of course, as promised, how to enroll four new members each week. And how we're going to go about doing that is learning how to get more yes, right? More yes from people that you share Young Living with, more yes in your life in general. There's things that we aren't doing that are easy, simple, and I should note, not pushy, that we can do that can get more yes happening in our business. We're going to talk about the mindset of that, and then we're going to talk about how you can make sure that you can show enough people to win. Show enough people to enroll four per week, to enroll 12 per week. How to show enough? We're going to talk about ways that you can get that done. You're going to need, you're going to learn the three things that you always, always need to have on hand, always, any day of the week, if you want to build your business, how you can get others to approach you, right? Because I think a lot of the reason why we aren't showing enough to get four people into our, into our business as members each week is because we're afraid of approaching people, right? Or reapproaching people that we worked ourselves up to be able to approach in the first place, right? We're going to talk about how we can flip the script and get people coming to you. We're also going to talk about how you can start conversations naturally. This is going to be a little bit of prospecting, but it's a lot more psychology and mindset than you would think, so that people are coming to you, or so that you can strike up conversations that feel natural and that lead to exposure. We're also going to talk about a super simple strategy to enroll four new members each week, and what you'll need in place to pull that off at the end of our call. All right. So to enroll four new members every week, so a few things that we need to know first. First is we need to know how to get a yes. We need an abundant exposure to opportunity, right? Meaning, we need an abundance of available, recognizable opportunity for us to share Young Living with many people, right? So we need to know how to get a yes. We need to obviously have lots of opportunity to get yeses, all right? And then we need a couple of simple tools to keep organized and to leverage our time. And then finally, we need a commitment to do whatever it takes to get what we're setting out for, and to get that done right now and build efficiency into the process. One of the things that was a really hard lesson learned for me in the beginning of my time in this industry is that I was willing to run hard and run fast to enroll four, five, six people per week into my business as customers and as business builders. I had a commitment to get it done right now, but I didn't have a commitment to building efficiency. I didn't have a commitment to long-term vision. And what resulted for me, and to be fair, I'm a bit more of a red personality than probably the majority of us here. I'll admit that out front. There's your grain of salt. I had that commitment. I got it done, but you know what happened? I burned out because I didn't build efficiency into the way I was growing. And so there's just as much an importance here for you to do what it takes to show enough people now, and bear in mind that there's another plate that we need to start spinning here that helps you to show more people in a way that isn't quite as demanding of your time and resources. And I'll get to what that means here in just a little bit, in case that's kind of sending your mind spinning, spinning a little bit. The idea here is it's going to take a bit more time upfront to get this going. But if you do this right, you will have leveraged the time spent so that you don't have to do as much work in the future. All right. So here's how we get more yes in our business. These are deceptively simple, you guys. First, we have two ears and one mouth for a reason. We've got to listen more. See, the thing is, we, we know what we want to do, right? We want to share Young Living with the people that we know and love, and with the people that we don't know, who will love Young Living too, right? We have ideas about products that can be helpful to them. We've got that in our mind. The fact is, they don't yet. So in order for us to connect the dots between what we have and what they feel like they want, we got to listen, and we got to listen way more than we talk. And the way that you're going to go about listening more effectively is by asking more questions, all right? This is one of the most important things that you need to know. This is prospecting 101, right? It isn't, hey, I want to sell you something. It's, hey, how is such and such going for you, right? So how is, and of course, you need contextual opportunity here. We'll get onto that on the next slide. But let's just say, for instance, you get into a conversation, online, offline, about, about weight loss goals, right? You know about the silk product line, right? You know about oils and, and the way that they impact energy levels, right, and focus. You've got like, somebody says, oh, I'm struggling with reaching my weight loss goals. Those gears start firing up for you, don't they? Well, the person that you're talking to isn't ready for you to tell them about silk and about this substance and that oil. They're not ready to be promoted to yet, right? Because you haven't listened enough. So then you start asking questions. Get them to share more with you about what they've tried, about what they're open to, about what they like, what they don't like, and you start to move yourself closer to an opportunity where you say, you know what? I think I have a solution for you. Would you be open to checking it out? And then you have an exposure, right? So it's not just someone says they have an issue. You've got a solution, and you just zero in and you landed on them, right? What you want to do is participate in a conversation, allow someone to be heard by you so that you can effectively understand what they see their needs as being, so you know how to position the product to meet it, right? Let me see, a quick show of hands if that makes sense to you. If you want clarification on that, I'm happy to help. All right. Nope, everybody's getting it. Great. All right. So you got it. You gotta, gotta, gotta ask questions. If you aren't getting enough yeses, if you aren't getting enough signups, you gotta ask more questions. And you got to get good at asking questions, and that's, and that's a practice, right? Basically, what you're doing is, there's a saying, right, about you can lead a horse to water, but you, but you can't make him drink, right? What we're doing here is we are salting the horse's food so as to lead the horse to water, and the, and the horse is thirsty when he gets to the water. Or instead of you painting the picture for them, you're putting the brush in their hand, right? So that's the goal here. You need to connect, and it needs to be on their terms and in their language. And the only way that you're going to understand that is to listen more and ask good questions. All right. And then this is really important, you guys. Ask for a decision, right? If you have gone through the, the steps of discovering what the interest is, what the needs are, and you have positioned what you have to offer, and you have shown Young Living, you have shown product to this person in the context of their needs, or even in a more general sense, even in a class, right? You have to ask for a yes or a no, right? So many of us don't do this. If we would ask for a decision more, even without the first two steps that I've put here, you're going to get 30% more yeses, because most of us are behaving timidly when we should be stepping into our power, right? We need to ask for the decision, and we need to be detached from the outcome. Obviously, people can say no, and we don't need to be crushed by that, right? The waitress isn't crushed by saying, no, I don't want dessert, right? If you tell her you don't want dessert, she's not going to run off crying. All you have to do, because this is really, it's your, your job with this business, is to share, get a yes or no. Share, get a yes or no. And then, of course, follow up later. We'll get into that in a second. So ask for a decision. And understand that it's not, it's not a polarizing situation when you ask for a decision, because there's this funny thing that happens. A lot of times, people will say, yes, but maybe not right now. And then you've got an opportunity for that yes to become a sign up. You know, that's one of your four for another week, right? But it could also be a no, which is really great for a couple of reasons that I'll get to here shortly. I don't want to skip this part. This is so important to get more yeses, is to follow up. After you've shared information with someone, they've told you yes, and they've signed up, or they've said yes, but paycheck time. A lot of us actually drop the ball. When somebody says, yes, but I'm not ready right away, or yes, but I need to talk to my spouse, or yes, but I'm waiting until after the holidays, or whatever that might be, how many of us drop the ball and never actually follow up and hold that person accountable to when they said they'd get started? If we did this more often, we would get 50% more yeses than we currently do, because most of us don't take this step. This is a really, really critical step to take, and that's because a no isn't a no forever, and a yes but later might as well have been a no if we never followed up on it, all right? And that no is rarely a no forever. Guys, this is a really important thing to know. A lot of people are like, yeah, I don't know, but I need to think about it, right? And usually, if you get that as a response from someone, you haven't done enough of the first two steps, right? Listening and asking the right questions, because if you have done your part of listening and uncovering the needs of the person that you're speaking with, then you know how to position Young Living and, and specifically, product lines and so on, in such a way that it makes sense for this person to take this next step, right? So when they say, I can't right now, you obtain the objection. So what's the reason why they can't say yes right now, or they can't get started right now? And then you make note, and you schedule your follow-up. This is really important. We don't just say, oh, well, you know, I can't right now, but after the holidays. What you do is right then, you take out your calendar, and you say, okay, cool. So if we're talking, you know, you're showing somebody in November, and they're like, well, I need to do this after the holidays. Okay, yeah, that's, that's totally cool. Tell you what, I'm going to take out my phone right now, and in, let's see, first week of January? How about, how about the 12th? Are you good? Or, let's see. Yeah, I think the 12th would work. Can you meet at 5 o'clock on the 12th? I'll go ahead and put that down, just so, just so we, we don't lose track, and we can get you started on the right foot. There's nothing pushy about that, right? It's very simple. You're a business owner, aren't you? And the person that you're speaking to is your potential customer who agreed to be a future customer, and so you're setting the date, right? And, and if you do this with everyone, everyone who says, can't right now, put them on the calendar, right? Start putting people on the calendar for that follow-up. Make it a formal follow-up, and you'll get more yeses. And you'll get people who will behave with you in more direct communicative fashion so that your time isn't wasted. And I think the more important way to put this is that your time is respected as a business owner. So those no's, those follow-ups on the no's, they're not always no's forever. And an important thing that you got to remember too is that your no's, if it's a hard no, get referrals, right? Or even if it's a soft no, like, oh, yeah, I don't know, maybe I'll think about it, then you get to ask the question. Well, listen, I'm, you know, I'm, I am out to help people like you solve these types of problems that we just talked about in this conversation, where I was asking you those questions, right? Who do you know that's looking for those kind of results right now? Because I'm looking to help people. And that person, well, a couple of things happen. Psychologically, first, that person thinks, oh, well, why not me, right? And they start rethinking their no. But then also, what happens is, is that, you know, if this, especially if this is a, a professional contact of yours, or if, if this is just a friend of yours, they are going to give you recommendations and introduce you to their friends, who you can then have these conversations with and repeat the process. All right. So let's talk about how we can get in a position where we can show enough people to have four new exposures, or four new, rather, four new signups per week, four new members per week. So let's get enough exposures to get four new members or more per week. First, this is a mindset piece, you guys. You have to always be inviting, always, always be inviting. There's always an opportunity in every conversation that you have to open up the door by asking questions so as to be able to introduce people to your information. And there are a couple of things that you need to always have on hand in order to make this possible. Literally, every day, you can be showing 20 people, and it doesn't have to take a ton of your time. You can be inviting 20 people to review information every day, and the averages can work out to where you get four new members a day. And again, this doesn't have to take up your entire day. Here's what you need, always to have these things in place. First, you need the opportunity for an in-person exposure. So if you have a live class coming up, something in your local community, there's an invitation that you can make to that. They can't make it to that? Okay, you could sit down with them one-on-one, right? One-on-one, sit down. I come to your house, we meet at a coffee shop, you come to my house, whatever it is. Have that opportunity available to schedule. Remember that word, schedule. Use your schedule. That's a really important part of this process. List your upcoming events, right? If you have several classes that you're going to be teaching coming up, list those on your GetOiling site. For those of you who don't know, we have an Events Manager built into GetOiling that when people are on your website, they can actually click a link in the menu, if you have it set up this way, and they can actually see the different classes that you're teaching, which lends great credibility, even if they're like, they don't live in your local market. They see that you're out there doing things. But if they're local to you, they can sign up for those classes, and they can see that they have those options available. But we don't just put those things there passively. We have to actively go out and invite people to join us there. So list those in your Events Manager, so you've got an easy way to share. It's a quick link that you can send off, or you can send them to your webpage and tell them to hit the Events tab, and then select the class that they want to attend, right? Really great way to stay organized, to keep on top of communication, and to put systems in place specifically so that setting up events becomes less of a drain on your time. Maybe a quick show of hands. How many of us can agree, setting up, executing, and following up after an event can be extraordinarily time-consuming, right? So we have tools in place with the GetOiling system to help you shave that time down dramatically. It's a little bit of an aside. Anyway, so have an in-person class listed. Always have one available that you can invite people to. It doesn't have to be your own, if you have an upline or sideline, if you do a group thing somewhere locally, or if you don't have one in place, you can meet for coffee, all right? First thing you need to have in place, live in-person opportunity. Second thing we need to have in place, a live online opportunity. So maybe you do an opportunity call. Maybe someone in your upline does an opportunity call, whatever it might be. It can be, it could be a Zoom, which we have connected. It's included in your membership with GetOiling when you get started for $1 at Basic or above. You could have a Facebook Live as well, whatever your online setting might be. It could be you, it could be someone else. Doesn't matter. You need to be able to point to it. So if someone can't make it to an in-person, one-on-one, or to a class, then maybe they're long distance. Okay, well, here's a live opportunity for you to tune in on this date and time. Now, the reason why live is an important thing to consider here for online, because, I mean, obviously, being able to smell the oils is a big deal, right? But it's not a deal breaker. The reason why it's really valuable to have a live online option is because it is scheduled, right? Schedule is, I should probably have just a great big slide here that says, schedule. Because when you invite someone to something, the likelihood of them actually doing anything with it, it goes up exponentially when it's got a very specific date and time attached to it, right? So following up with someone in the future is not following up with someone in the future unless it has a specific date and time attached to it. Otherwise, it's just an idea, right? So have a thing that's live that you can point people to. That's number two, right? In-person, online, and then, of course, use your Events Manager and your Zoom. You can actually do online events exclusively, and list those with your offline events as well in your GetOiling Events Manager. And then finally, you need your digital resource, all right? So if somebody, if you can't pin them down for, you know, in-person, they're out of town, you know, they're gone for the summer. Okay, fine. Well, hey, I've got this thing coming up on Thursday. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I've got a thing on Thursday. Totally fine. Hey, tell you what, what are you doing right now? You've got 15 minutes? Okay, cool. Here's this link. Watch this, and I'm going to call you right back, right? So the third thing that you need to have in place is a digital resource. So this can be a recording of a presentation from number one or number two in this list. This can be a written article of some kind. Definitely prefer recordings of presentations, whether it's a live recording of a presentation or a presentation that you record for the purpose of sharing. Those tend to work better than just giving someone a bunch of text to read. You really want to cater for the potential that somebody is going to be incredibly distracted, because they always are, right? So you want to have that tool in place that can show and share without you being there, all right? So that's three tools. You always, always want to be inviting. And if you have all of these three things in your back pocket available to offer to someone at any given point in time, would you strike up a conversation, and you give an opportunity for someone to review information? There is literally no way that they can get out of that conversation without making an appointment or watching something right now, okay? This means that you are making good use of your time. This means that the people that you are interacting with as a business owner are respectfully working with you as a business owner, respecting your time by setting an appointment with you, attending a live event, or watching something right now if they can't schedule something with you, or schedule. I, I used to do this all the time, you guys. I used to schedule at 6 o'clock on Tuesday, I'm going to call you, and then I'm going to send you a link, and you're going to watch a video, and then after it's over, I'm going to call you back, and we're going to talk about it, right? I used to do that almost exclusively, actually, when I was recruiting online off of Facebook in the beginning of building my businesses in this industry. It doesn't have to be perfect by any means for you to make this work, so long as you have a thing, and so long as you are committed to doing what it takes to making sure that you show and share enough to get four people to say yes every week. And of course, you'll be building systems into place over time using tools like these, like that digital resource, right? Where you can show without being there to do it, all right? And of course, you can use funnels, which we have extensive trainings on what funnels are and how to build them in our Weekly Work Session trainings, if you go to youtube.com/getoiling. And we've got, we've got actually funnel trainings on how to use Sways that you can get from third-party resources, which I know a lot of you guys use, and turn those into funnels and so on, so you can share lots of options there. We've got the training available for you and the capacity for you to create funnels where you share a link, and it shows the opportunity, and you could even have it send an email that says, hey, let's schedule our call. When's a good time for you that goes out automatically, right? That's the kind of thing that can, in the future, work for you to make this take up less of your time so that you spend more time working with serious people, which is what you want to do as a business owner, right? All right. You also have, just so you guys know, when you get started with GetOiling, and for those of you who haven't really fully developed your site to its potential, when you sign up, you get a site that's already made, it's already ready, and it has an opportunity page that does this for you, right? It does well enough. We have people who use this strategy right now without any real further personalization or changes to their GetOiling website. They just get started. And if you follow the steps and you're asking the questions, the things that, that we talked about in the previous slide, that is enough information for someone to say yes, and for you to get someone started. So you actually have that available to you right away. So if you're, you know, if you're intimidated by tech, or you just want to know how you can go and put this to use right now, you can, for a dollar, like, right now. All right. So another thing that we want to make sure that we're doing is consciously creating opportunities, all right? And these are opportunities for you to share and to show and to grow. So first, this is a mindset piece and strategy as well, but I think it's an important thing to master in our minds first, is that we want to be engaging in our interactions with people, right? Instead of promoting, we want to seek to provoke conversation. Conversation is where we get to ask questions. Asking questions is where we get to discover what people really want. And when we know what they really want, and they feel heard, then we can position what we have as a solution to what they've shared with us, right? So when you're interacting, when you're posting on Facebook, instead of just pasting the PV promo, ask questions that provoke conversation so that you can get into individual conversations with people so that you can help them solve their problems. And then, of course, they want to hear what your solution is, right? Think about that. It doesn't take that much time. And how much more impactful and meaningful is that? And how much more likely is that activity going to become fruitful for you? People fundamentally are interested in those who are interested in them. You need to be interesting in such a way that others want to hear more from you. And if you show them that you want to hear from them, And if you show them that you wanna hear from them, it reciprocates. This is a, it's a subconscious thing that happens. When you are a source of conversation and information and you wanna hear from others. They wanna keep showing up because people really love to be heard, they love to feel heard. Especially when we get on social media and, and there's all these voices from everywhere, and everyone thinks that they need to follow the influencers. And oh, I'm just a, I'm just a someone from somewhere, right? Make people feel heard and valued, and they will listen to what you have to say, and they will follow your recommendations. So again, create those opportunities by being engaging and genuinely interested in others. You also wanna give people a place so that they can be heard, they'll return to your, you know, so let's just say we're talking about your Facebook page. Um, or it could be, it could be an Instagram, it could be Pinterest, it could be wherever. Where you are regularly showing up and giving people the opportunity to talk about themselves. That is going to be reciprocated to you, it's just how the, 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 the human mind works. Uh, and, and you will create a community in that way, and that builds trust, and it will build an abundance of people for you to share with, so you can get your four new members per week or more. Alright, and then of course, you want to think about it this way, be the person that you would follow online, right? Think about how you can deliver the most impactful information, the most helpful information possible. And remember that you're competing with like, you know, how distracting the internet is, right? No matter what platform you're on, you're competing with massive distraction. So how can you be of service in a way that makes people want to come back, right? That, that rises above the noise, that gives people a way to build trust with you. Right, so, and, and we'll get into how this can work with a strategy here shortly, but I wanna kinda place that seed in there for you. And really think about how you can be the leader others would follow. Would you follow you, right? With the posts that you make now, how can you start to change the way that you're interacting in such a way that people's ears kind of perk up? You know? It's okay to be a little edgy, you know, it's, it's, it's a really very okay to go against the grain, because people who agree with you are going to show up nodding their heads. And, 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 and quite grateful, uh, for the opportunity to interact, um, with others of like mind in that forum, right? Alright, so to that end, be someone you would follow. Become a beacon to others, rise above the noise online and everywhere, really. Um, show up consistently in your life, in your business and on social media. And by showing up consistently, I mean, commit to being your best and commit to it every day, right? Have your routine and follow it. Be of the integrity you seek to be and show up every day with it, whether it's yielding you the results you want yet or not. You wanna become known for who you are, for your take on life, uh, for your passion and your experience, your expertise. There's, there's something special that you have to offer, um, you don't need to have a pedigree of any kind. Um, actually, what I've found quite often, if you have one, it becomes a little more challenging. Um, because then you start to conflate a title with how you get this thing done with, with building Young Living. It's really very simple. You recognize Young Living as something that is integral to who you are and how you operate in life. And so just let it be that and show the world who you are and what you're passionate about. So obviously, Young Living serves a broad swath of interests and needs. Um, what's the one that really rings for you? Become known for that, by talking about that, by helping people uncover solutions to achieve that. You have the power to do that, because you have this product line, you have this education, and you have your own story and experience. So embody that, embrace that, and the promotion that follows, the, 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 the interest that follows. Showing up first consistently, being about what you're passionate about, is how you start to lead people. And you wanna consistently deliver great information that helps others without expectation attached to it. So, you don't want to say, you know, help somebody with a problem because you, you know, that you, you wanna tit for tat. You wanna give first, and I think that we all know, this doesn't require a lot of explanation, that what goes around comes around. And if you give, you will inevitably receive. It may not be in the moment or in exactly the way that, you know, that you envisioned, why we should be detached from outcomes when we're being of service to others, right? Um, but keep that mindset in your business. Because what you're doing is sharing information that helps people and building trust with them. So that when the time comes to have that conversation, where you uncover their needs, where you can illustrate your solution to that problem. Uh, by sharing Young Living and having them give you a decision, uh, they're going to be that much more likely to get started with you. Now use your blog on GetOiling, I don't know if you guys knew this, but there is a blog feature on your GetOiling website. This is a perfect place for you to share what you know, share what you love. And just to talk about things that have helped you, that might help others who have been where you've been, right? It's a great place to start, you don't have to be an expert on anything other than your life and what you've known. For people to appreciate what you've shared, for you to give life-changing information to those who would find what you've shared. And, and definitely get into videos too as well, there's no reason why you shouldn't putting, so making videos, so say like on YouTube, and then putting them on your GetOiling blog. It's a double threat, great thing to do, absolutely recommend that you start doing that. And then you take that, that GetOiling blog link and you put it out to social media. You put it on Pinterest with a pretty picture, you share it in groups on Facebook or on your page on Facebook. You put it in the Instagram links, you, however you wanna share. You've got value-forward information, helpful information, so that you're able to build that bridge of trust for people who would eventually see and then say yes. And then build momentum, right? You need to lead the pack, you're gonna build momentum with your income-producing activities. Focusing on your income-producing activities, which are inviting, exposing, closing, duplicating, right? Following up is in there too, that's in the closing part. So, those are the things that are profitable for your business, those are the things you need to be doing the majority of the time. If you focus on these things and you show up consistently in your life and business, focusing on these things. You'll start to vibrate at a higher level, you'll start to attract people of higher caliber, and you'll start to attract serious builders, right? People see you behaving like a successful, successful business owner, right? They're going to see when, when, they'll come to you and say, hey, what is it that you're doing? Right? And they wanna know, because they're looking for someone who's serious, who's behaving seriously. Guys, I can't stress this enough, if you embody these things, even before you get them figured out fully. Show up consistently, honoring your time and, and, and being present and listening to others and helping them solve problems. Do that consistently, people start showing up who are like, hey, I'm looking for a change in my life, and you look like somebody who knows what they're doing. They're looking for that, people are looking for that right now, and they're serious builders, they're the next leg that blows up your team. If you do these steps first, those people will find you, promise. Alright, now, when you've always got enough people to talk to, because they're coming to you, because they see your integrity, because they see your passion. Because they feel heard by you, because they trust you. When people, when, when you always have enough of these people to talk to, who are ready to hear what you have to say because they trust you. Then it's always gonna be easy to enroll four or more new members a week, right? If you're showing up and they trust you, and you say, come see this, how many do you think are gonna come watch? And how many more do you think are going to say yes? If you've got those things in place, right? So, let's talk about the steps that you can take to get this going, alright? So formula for four a week and beyond, first, you wanna get really clear on what your message is. Now, this is something, we just recently did a, a deep dive, uh, personal branding intensive, it was so much fun and so just illuminating. If you're here, maybe like, give us a wave. Um, that was a transformative course where, um, where we got really clear on, on what our purpose is, right? Because your purpose is bigger than just sharing Young Living, isn't it? Young Living is a leg of, of your purpose, it is, it is a vehicle by which you will achieve the bigger vision you have for your life and for the world, right? So get clear on what that is. Who is it that you wanna help, big picture, right? You're not, your, your only purpose is not getting to silver by September. It's not, you know that, right? Get clear on what your purpose is, your message, who you wanna help, why you wanna help them, and why others would want to know and be a part of that as a movement. And always have two to three exposure tools on hand, the ones that I mentioned before. Local and in-person opportunity, online live opportunity, and online recorded or written material. And then track what you're doing and follow up, alright? So important, when you share information with someone, put them into your contact manager in GetOiling. Add a follow-up plan to them, so that you don't forget to follow up with them. Three days after an event or forty-eight hours after they have reviewed information, right? Put them into your contact manager, track your activity with your digital upline coach, so that you can actually see how much time you're spending on your income-producing activities. And you will be golden, and make sure you are tracking always. Alright, um, continuing. Don't wait for perfect circumstances to take action. If you don't love the recorded presentation you have access to, if you're not super comfortable with getting up in front of a room and delivering a presentation. Don't wait until you think you're going to be educated or prepared enough or have a pretty enough thing to share. It's not worth it, it's, it's not worth putting your life off, putting your purpose off, putting your success off. Waiting for something perfect, because it's not gonna come around. Practice is perfection, progress is perfection, we won't create it until our feet start moving. So start working on this now, start taking action on this now. You're only going to get better by doing, not by studying, not by re-watching this webinar or watching ten others. You gotta get out there and start making it happen. And you gotta begin making your content, your blogging, your, your videos, however you want to put yourself out there. You wanna start doing that right away, again, it doesn't have to be perfect. The beautiful thing about this industry is that people don't want to join the most perfect polished individual. Most people wanna join someone who looks and sounds like them, who's been through things they've been through, who they can trust because they can relate to. Someone they would wanna go on vacation with, wouldn't you rather build a whole team of people that you would really love to like, travel the world with? Wouldn't it be great to just work with people that you really like? I mean, that's kind of the big difference between this work and a job, right? You get to choose who you work with, so begin creating the content that will attract and resonate with those people that you wanna connect with, that you wanna surround yourself with. Because the byproduct of this, you guys, especially like in the beginning, when things are kinda rusty and you don't really have everything figured out. You're gonna actually attract people who are there to cheer you on, you're going to resonate with people who would have never found you otherwise. And they're gonna become some of your best friends, promise, it's happened. My, my first YouTube videos were awful, but I used to get like, four years after I made them, people would reach out and say, hey, you know what? I just watched your video and such and such, and I just wanted to say thank you. I feel like you gave me permission to make this change in my life. And I remember back to making that video that I made, and I thought it was terrible, but I had made a promise to myself that I was going to show up every day. Uh, for, for that period of time, I was doing a challenge, I was gonna show up every day for thirty days and make a video. Um, and no matter how good it was, bad it was, whatever, and it produced growth, right? People found me, I didn't, I didn't pay for marketing, I didn't do anything. I made them, shared them on social media, people found me. You don't have to be a genius at this, you don't have to really know much at all, other than your truth, your message, that thing you wanted to get clear on in that first step of this formula. And to just put it out there, not waiting for things to be perfect. Start today, because you will get great if you do. And then share the content that you make, and, um, and, and do that online, do it in any media platform that you prefer. If you like LinkedIn, if you like, uh, Facebook, Instagram, whatever, share your content there, YouTube, of course, if you're doing videos. And your following will grow, it's not gonna grow to a hundred thousand overnight. It'll be a trickle of meaningful progress, and it will snowball over time. If you are consistent and you show up consistently, you will snowball into a place where you always have enough people to show, always. And people who are pretty ready to say yes, because you've built trust with them and they feel like they know you, right? And then, really importantly, you guys, tracking, track your time, track how you're spending your time on your business. And make sure that you are spending at least sixty percent of your active business building time inviting, showing, and closing. So important. The majority of us spend sixty-plus percent of our time learning and planning and not moving our feet. And if we want to increase, we want to experience increase and abundance, we need to have an abundance of footwork happening, right? Uh, we need to get that snowball rolling, it doesn't become big enough to roll on its own until we push it up the hills so it can glide down, right? You gotta spend that time, you gotta put it in, stop putting off. Do it today, and then tomorrow, and then the next day, and show up consistently, and you'll start to see a breakthrough. And it's remarkable what happens when people start showing up and saying, hey. You know, I've, I've been watching you for the last year or six months or whatever, and something's changed in you. And like, I don't really talk about this, but I'm going through a big change in my life, and I feel like you can help me. Please tell me. People are gonna show up and they're gonna share that story with you, stories like it. And they're looking for you right now, they're looking for you, waiting for you to step into your power. So that you can be the leader that can help take them to where they're meant to be in life, so. Be consistent, track what you're doing so you know you're doing it right, right? And show up every day, every, every day. So put what you learned today into action, you guys. You wanna make sure, I don't think I have that noise-canceling thing on, do I Greg? You can probably hear that horn going behind.
Yeah, I hear a little horn.
Yep, sorry about that, here we go, alright. Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you sound great.
Okay, perfect, sorry about that, uh, we found this really cool noise-canceling, uh, software. Um, but I did not get it hooked up to Zoom before our call today, sorry for the interruption. Alright, so, um, put what you learned today into action, you guys. It's really important that you take what you learned, make sure that this, what, forty-seven minutes that we have now spent together is not wasted time for you. And the only way to do that is to act. And you can get your follow-up and your tracking system, if you don't already have it. Events management, Zoom meetings, email and text marketing, and so much more, literally everything you need except the VO. And the products, of course, to grow Young Living, uh, with GetOiling, and you can get started for just one dollar for your first month. And you can head over to GetOiling.com today to get started, and it, we do have a thirty-day money-back guarantee. We stand behind what we have created, so, let's hop over to Q and A, if you guys have any questions, any topics you would like to deeper dive into. If there's anything that you would like to see demonstrated, um, definitely let us know. Oh, what's we get? emojis in here.
Yeah, yeah, uh, one question I saw was from Martha about what was the YouTube link, and I think she, I think she was asking about the youtube.com/GetOiling. I did put that in the chat as well.
Perfect.
I just wanted to put that for those watching the recording.
Yeah, fantastic. Hmm, what is the name of that noise-canceling program we found, Crisp, K-R-I-S-P?
Yep, I can put the link in here, it's, uh, K-R-I-S-P.ai. It's pretty cool, um, I have it on now, so, you know, it, it, it's kind of interesting, I'm not sure if we can, well, anyway.
I've, I've just turned it on, actually, I totally forgot to do that, you have to do the setting separately. So if my dog barks or your dog's bark, you guys won't hear it, pretty, pretty cool, awesome. So, oh, Regina asks, how often do you suggest following up? That's going to depend, right, so it's not like a blanket thing, um. So if you have, if you have asked someone to review information. The short answer is schedule. Like, if, if you schedule, then you don't need to worry about numbers of times, right? But if you've invited someone to review information and you follow up immediately, which you should, right? At the end of a presentation, while you're there in person, you need to ask for decisions, if, maybe in a class setting, right? Um, otherwise, you need to follow up the next day and get them on the phone, right? Call, like, don't, don't text or email or Facebook message, don't give people an opportunity to ghost you. Call, uh, and, and if they- Call, uh, and, and if they aren't available to have a conversation at that point in time. Then you schedule the future conversation, right? Um, and so if you schedule, then the, then you have a very clear directive, right? So you aren't just, you know, following up just because you're supposed to, you think you're supposed to follow up. No, you're following up with a purpose. So you should always have a purpose for following up, have it be very clear on what you're following up on, what you're going to talk about. Um, you know, like you wouldn't, you wouldn't hire an attorney and then like have a, you know, a random follow-up call, right? You, you have, you have action oriented. You wouldn't hire a coach or speak to, or you wouldn't even before you hire, say maybe like a health coach. When you have a call, you're going to have a very clear directive, right? So you want to have a clear directive when you're having a follow-up with someone. And if they, and if we're talking about multiple follow-ups and how many should I do, like if somebody's not responding to you. I think, and take my red grain of salt with this, but I actually think that it's, it's a respectable way and a way that demands respect of others, which is, I, I don't think that's red. I think that's just, it's, it's being respectful of yourself, um, is, I call them out. So, you know, hey, so you, you expressed some interest in this, uh, and I feel like I'm having a hard time reaching you. Um, let me know. I certainly don't want to waste your time or mine. I would love to sit down with you and share. You know, along the lines of what we've talked about, uh, let me know a couple of times this week that worked for you or just hit reply and let me know that you, that you'd rather not. And, and either way is okay. Hope you have a great day, right? All right.
Peggy asks, how do you present to a business?
That's so, I mean, you obviously need to have a business contact, right? So you need to get to know someone within the business. So let's just say, for instance, you, um, like there is, maybe there's a natural health center. Um, or, um, massage therapy practice or something and you're interested in maybe getting them to carry your oils. So you would get in contact with them and let them know, um, that you'd like to have a conversation with the owner. Or maybe you go get a massage and you talk to the massage therapist while you're there. Have an end, have a conversation and start asking questions. It's just as though you were speaking to someone one-on-one, asking questions, you know? So do you guys carry any, um, you know, do you carry any product lines? Do you, what kind of oils do you use? Um, are you familiar with, um, you know, with sourcing methods? Start asking those probing questions that get people to go, oh, well, yeah, I guess that would make a lot of sense for me. Another question, especially if you're going to be going into and talking to people who have massage businesses and other types of holistic service businesses. Um, recurring revenue, um, and, and, and sort of leveling revenue is something that, that keeps you out of the dips. Cause the, the dips are a very real thing, right? There's seasonal flux, uh, fluctuations. Um, you have an end to look at with this where you could say, you know, well, what, what kind of, uh, you know, supplemental income streams do you have outside of just providing one-on-one services? Um, I've got an interesting opportunity to discuss with you with, you know, for a product line that is, that I think is very much in line with, uh, the views you've espoused on your website. Let's have the talk. I'll pay for coffee. Yeah. Let's see. Peggy says, I have discussed with my doctor, but I'm unclear on how to broach. So why don't you join up? Um, well, I mean, if you've shared it already, then you could just ask him that question, honestly. Um, I, I think when, when you're speaking, you know, professional to professional, it, there's no harm in being direct. Actually, there's a great deal of benefit in being direct, especially if you're talking to a doctor. They're probably quite busy, right? So if you get straight to the point, hey, listen, this is something that could be really helpful. You could use it for this. And, uh, you know, it, it'll do this for you, right? If you've already had the conversation. Um, but if you've already shared it, say, hey, when are you going to start it? If you've got that kind of a relationship with them. Ask for the close. Um, really don't, don't be afraid to ask for someone to make a decision. Um, because that's what you're here for. You're, you're here to share something that could change someone's life. And then ask them to choose whether or not they're ready to, to change their life right now. And if not now, when, right? That's it. Very simple. All right. We got some questions in the Q and A box here. Um, oh, multiple landing pages. Martha's asking, how do I do multiple landing pages? Still confused about it. Um, I think, so it depends on, on what feature you're using for the landing pages. I mean, you could have a landing page over your main site on Get Oiling. So when people land at your site.com, there's a landing page there. Uh, before they go forward into the additional information. For those of you who don't know if you're brand new, a landing page is, uh, if you're not familiar. It is, uh, it's a place where people enter their name and email address most often, uh, in exchange for some kind of valuable information that you have to share. Um, inside your landing pages tab, uh, in your contact manager, you can build, depending on your plan level, I think, right? You can build a, a little or a whole lot of landing pages. Um, there is quite a few that are already built for you. Um, and so what you would do Martha is you would create it based on, you know, if, if you're, maybe it's for a makeup guide or for pets or babies. Um, and you would share that individual link. Let's see. Martha also asks, when someone comes from my website, comes on my website for the first time and puts that they're interested in fitness and overall wellness, how do I put them on another landing page? Actually Martha, what I would do, if somebody goes to your website and, and they say, I'm interested in such and such thing. Unless you're currently getting thousands of people opting in a day or hundreds opting in a day, I would reach out to them individually. I, I, I would write a personal email to them and, and, and start asking those questions. Set up a time for the two of you to get on a phone call. And not necessarily send them to a new landing page. Um, if you're getting, if you're getting fewer than twenty, uh, thirty people opting into your landing pages a day, I, I would do my best to get on the phone with them or schedule a call with them all, um, as quickly as possible. Until it's an untenable thing, right? Um, let's see. Okay. Martha says, I'm on week three of the ninety day challenge. Awesome. For those of you who don't know, inside of our help section, inside of Get Oiling, um, we have like dozens of hours of training on how to launch and blitz your business. Um. All right. So she's on week three. She's got people that have been on her website. Do I manually reach out to those people? Yes. Yeah. So, um, if you have the new prospects campaign already set up on your landing pages, that is default. Um, then it will do some reaching out for you, but it's never going to be a replacement for you making that connection. So um, a lot of this you can automate, such as collecting names and emails, um, from people who are interested in making certain types of changes in their life. Um, but then you now know how to open a conversation with those people individually, one-on-one, which is what you need to do next. All right. We got any over here in the chat?
Yeah, we've got another one from Suzette here. Um, she asks, does only the main user get landing page options? Are kind of make landing pages for people on my team for their sites? And then she gives the name of, uh, one of the people on her sites. So I think you're talking about the leg builder links. And yes, that is something that you can do. There is a theme on there, uh, and a website that you can, or sorry, landing page that you can choose. And I can actually probably just share my screen out here quick. See if this works here. Can you see this screen?
Yes.
So this is, this is the landing page of screen, but I think what you're talking about there is the leg builder link. So if I go under leg builder links here in the menu and I'll just edit one of these existing ones. You can choose the website theme and the landing page for that leg builder link. So, you know, depending on your purpose. So like maybe somebody's really focusing on, I don't know, skincare, maybe you want to go over here and, and select a landing page that's a little bit more about, uh, you know, skincare. You know, maybe the makeup one or something like that, or build your own, certainly can. So, um, as far as like what happens to that? I mean, this, the leg builder link is really just kind of a getting them started. Feature it, the, the leads still come in to your contact manager and emails come from you if you have any campaigns set up on that. So um, at some point they'll want to get their own system so that their name can be, uh, in front of that. But yeah, so hopefully that helps there. That question.
Awesome. Oh, you got a question about the menu, custom menus?
Yeah. So what is this? Kathy says, how can I put my different websites from leg builder link like seedlings, children, pets in my menu bar or where can I find that training? I can go over that here again, really quick. Um, share up my screen again. Oops, this is not the right one. Um, sorry. How do I stop that now? Wrong window. And here we go. Okay. So going back here, the, um, editing the menu, there is some training. So this is something new. I think we sent out an email kind of in the last week uh, about this. I think it was in last training, but there's this new little question mark button in the bottom. It's like this awesome help library. Uh, so you can, you can actually find that information here. Like you can search it, for example, like menu, custom menu and changing the homepage, for example. But I can walk you through that here, uh, quickly. So that's under my site settings where the menu is. And I'll come in here and click site menu. And then there will be, so this one has a site menu. If you come in here the first time, it might be blank. If you've never customized it. It's just going to say, uh, it's going to have something like, you've got no custom menu setup. Click here if you want to add some, some common items. You probably want to do that. Um, but then once you're in here and you're editing, so you can go ahead and click add and there will be an item here that says the built-in get, get oiling website theme. So here's where you could choose. So like you can choose the theme and it lets you go through all the different, um, countries and themes that are available. And pick one of those and then you can give it a name. Uh, let's say you want to put the, the makeup one on there. I call it our makeup line or something like that. And then, um, you can choose which menu header it shows under. And even make it the main page of your website. But then see now like there's this makeup line and then you could, let's say you want to position it somewhere. So you could go ahead and add like multiples of these. If I want to have another website theme and maybe this, this time we're going to talk about skincare. Oops, um, skincare, if I can type, apparently I gotta get my. Uh, and then once I have the, the skincare line, then yeah, maybe I'll position that up here. But that's, uh, that's how you do that. You can have as many of those themes in there as you want to. As you saw, there were quite a few of them. If I pick the website theme, we've got, uh, you know, a very large number of themes here for, you know, they're, they're based in different countries. So if you got to build it in another, another country or, or whatever you want to do, you can do there. So hopefully that helps, Kathy.
Oh, and Greg, would you say you maybe went over that and some other customization details in last week's training?
Um, boy, it feels like forever ago. I might have.
I know, right? So, um, if you, if you go to, just, just for, for reference, if you go to youtube.com forward slash get oiling. Um, last week's training was called customize and personalize your website. And this was Greg doing a deep dive into some how-tos. Um, and then the week before that I did a more contextual, the elements of young living distributor websites that work. Um, and went over some of the things that Greg broke down into more technical detail last week. And so the, those two trainings are called customize and personalize your website. And then young liv- living distributor websites that work. Those two are available for free and they are, um, just value packed. And they are on YouTube right now for, for you to go check out as all of these do. Uh, so yeah, um, Martha was asking, I believe, what the member area is and what the, um, uh, the contact manager limit is on premium.
Yeah. So for, for premium, there currently isn't any limit of the number of contacts. It's more about like how many emails and texts you send out. So we've got this marketing credits concept and you can check that out by, uh, clicking on that help button as well to learn more about that or send us an email. Um, so yeah, there's no limits on the contact manager in terms of the number that you have, but you can always, it's limited based on how many emails and texts you can send out. And the member area, I know we did a, probably more than one training on that, uh, as well.
Yeah, there's, so there's the truth about Facebook, I believe, is, is, is the training, uh, on YouTube. Uh, let me see. Yeah. The truth about Facebook groups. Um, is when, where we announced to the members area and then following that, we had a Q and A that Greg did as well on the member area. Those are both, uh, from about a month ago on our YouTube channel in depth. If you want to check those out. Um, and what the members area is guys, uh, for, for those of you who uh, aren't familiar with members area or membership sites, uh, you basically have the opportunity to get off of Facebook entirely. If you wanted to, um, have your group on, on your terms, on your turf. Uh, and as a lot of info marketers, uh, you know, there's people who sell courses, coaching and things like that. Um, as many of them do, they have, uh, online classes, uh, membership areas, chat rooms, uh, private resources. Uh, and our member area was developed with you in mind to accommodate your prospects, your team. Uh, and your members, you know, so if you want to make sure that you are sending out and providing a community, uh, with, with information. And so for your members, that value add for people who are maybe on essential rewards, you give them a monthly recipe or a video or, you know, an online class or something. It's a, a place for you to provide that additional value. Cool, cool. All right. Well, do we have any other questions? As one just popped up.
Yes, there's two more actually.
Fabulous. So Melissa asks, uh, what, where is the best get oiling training for me to watch in order to utilize pre-made content such as grow workspace? A, we have two of those that come to mind actually. Uh, there is from about a month ago. Um, using sway to share young living is one of our training topics in our get oiling YouTube channel. So get oiling. Uh, youtube.com forward slash get oiling. Um, and there is a playlist there with our get growing live weekly work sessions. Uh, there's one there that's called using sway to share young living and hopefully this isn't going to turn. Okay. Um, there's also, ah, here we go. Get oiling.com forward slash sway funnel. S W A Y F U N N E L, all one word. Get oiling.com forward slash sway funnel. Um, that actually teaches you how to set up a funnel inside Get Oiling that not only utilizes sway to provide a presentation. But it also follows up with an opportunity for people to set an appointment with you. Perfect exposure funnel. So you can, uh, because it sets an appointment, it schedules. Um, so I hope you enjoy that, Melissa. Let's see, did we have, you said there were two. Is there another one?
Yeah, I think it, it's up in the chat a little bit. Uh, it's related from Kathy. How can we put our grow workspace newsletter within our website to where it shows full size? If, you know, if it's a sway one, then yeah, with the training that we just posted in there. Um, as far as like where to put it, if this is like a permanent content on your website, one idea would be to create a website page. Cause that actually is full size, assuming by full size, you mean like full screen width. Then the page is probably the best place to paste even, and for, you know, you can copy and paste that content pretty easily into Get Oiling. Uh, another idea might be a blog post. That's another idea. That's not, you know, technically full screen because there's a little sidebar that has a recent post. But that format might work too. I think that would be another good option if you, if you're actually wanting to put that on your website as permanent content. Otherwise, yeah, this way funnel is, is another awesome way to do that. So depends on what they have. I know they got all sorts of resources. So I think that's a question that I see here.
Awesome. Yeah, we, we play very well with, uh, the grow workspace material. Whether it's using the sways to put into an online class in our member area, uh, putting it onto a custom page so that you have an exposure funnel using a sway presentation. Um, you know, using the newsletter content and putting that into a, um, into a saved reply so that you've got an easy, easy thing to send out, sending it out as an actual newsletter. So, so many different ways. I mean, basically they've got great content and content's what you want to plug into a system. So, um, of course you could also create your own great content as well. So fantastic. Thank you guys for all of your great questions. A lot of really good questions today. And, uh, if you have any, if you have any requests, uh, for, for trainings you would like to see in the future, there are topics that, that you'd like to see covered. Obviously do a quick browse through our YouTube channel. We may have already covered it. Uh, but if you have questions, want something, uh, you know, some kind of help to grow your business, let us know. We, uh, we'd love to help you grow and, uh, and to provide you with, you know, just as, as broad of topics and as narrow of topics as possible to serve you to that end. So awesome. Hey, Michelle, thank you for being here. All right. So, uh, yeah, so I guess we're, we're good to go. Thank you guys for sticking around and we will see you on next week's training.
See everybody. Thank you.